Hello, I'm Phil Best with Premier Properties of Dublin. Our commitment to you is stated well in our slogan, "Service is our culture." And today, we'd like to talk about community service and voting. Early voting begins Monday, April the 30th, and will run through May the 18th. And our primary will be May the 22nd. Please take time to vote and vote for the candidate of your choice. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to our Lawrence County School Board debate for District 4. My name is Justin Garrett, and I will be your moderator for the evening. On behalf of Dublin Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce and TV 35, I would like to welcome our two candidates, Mr. Bill Crooms and Mr. Kevin Malone. To begin, each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. Mr. Crooms, we will begin with you, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Bill Crooms, pastor of White Springs Baptist Church here in Lawrence County. My wife is Kim Crooms, and many of you know her, and so many of you are friends with her. I have five children. Kaylee, who is a graduated senior at Georgia Southern University. Ty Daniel, who's at Georgia Southern as well, with working on an engineering degree. And I also have a son Caleb, who is there at Georgia Southern. And I have Kaylee is graduating with her nursing degree. Emma is going to be a graduating senior at West Lawrence High School. And Taylor is in the 10th grade at West Lawrence High School. And I'm proud to say that all five have gone through the Lawrence County school system. And all five of those children have a great value for education. A man once told me, a man in the name of Tim Stuckey, that it was my responsibility to educate my children and give them the greatest opportunity for success. And that wisdom has stayed with me, and I've tried to place my children in a position of success through education. My wife is a nurse, and she also is a master's in psychology. And so, education for our family is vital, and that's why I'm running. I believe in the importance of education, not just for my children, but for all the children in this county. The children that maybe excel highest on test scores, and those that maybe do not test as high as others. Each child deserves the best opportunity given by us parents, administrators, teachers, all those that work with the county. And I'm running to extend my service to the people of Lawrence County and to do the best job I can to help educate our children.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Now, Mr. Malone, you also have two minutes.
Sure, thank you. I'm Kevin Malone. I'm born and raised here in Lawrence County. I'm married to my wife Sherri. She's a high school counselor at West Lawrence High School. We have two children, Logan and Chandler. They both attend Northwest Lawrence Elementary. I've been employed with Rayonier Advanced Materials for 17 years. I'm a registered forester with the State of Georgia, and we raise cattle with our family in Dudley, and we also are tree farmers. We're active members with Dudley Baptist Church, where I've had the opportunity to serve in our Iwana program with our Sparks pre-K through second grade. I'm also a very active member in our community. I've had the good fortune to coach several kids out there in both basketball and baseball, softball through Dublin Lawrence Recreation Department, upward basketball, as well as Dudley Little League. Like Mr. Crooms said earlier, my family is deeply rooted in education. My mother just retired after a little over 29 years of service. My wife, my sister, my sister-in-law are all involved. So around the table, when we get together, there's a lot of conversation about education and about how important it is to our kids, to our community. My kids are at Northwest Lawrence, like I said. I have a niece and several nephews, along with several other cousins that are involved in the school system. And it's a pleasure to see and hear them talk each and every day about their experiences in school. And I'm looking forward for the opportunity to serve our community, a community that has given so much to me over my years. It's a chance now to give back and to really step out and listen to the community, listen to the voices, and try to have a positive impact on our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll take a quick commercial break, and then we'll be right back with you with questions for both of our candidates.
I like Kevin Tanner, County Commissioner, District 5. He's not running for office, he's running for you. When I grow up, I want a county commissioner just like Kevin Tanner. My mom and dad are going to vote for Kevin Tanner, and when I get old enough, I'm going to vote for him too. Kevin Tanner always supports my school, and I want you to support Kevin Tanner. Go to the polls right now, and elect Kevin Tanner as your county commissioner. Vote for Kevin Tanner, County Commissioner, District 5.
Experience the perfect blend of style and comfort at Hunter's Point Luxury Apartment Units. These three-bedroom, two-bath duplexes are beautifully designed with a look of hardwood flooring, modern fixtures, and plenty of natural light. The kitchen is outfitted with stainless steel appliances, beautiful countertops and cabinetry. And these brand-new three-bedroom, two-bath duplexes are complete with garage. These duplexes are move-in-ready. Hunter's Point Luxury Apartment Units. Call K. Grayson Company now at 353-1123, and visit Hunter's Point Luxury Apartment Units, conveniently located on Claxton Dairy beside Springdale Park.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome back. We will be starting with our questions now. Mr. Malone, we'll begin with you. What is your vision for Lawrence County schools?
You know, I'm very proud of our school system. I'm very proud of the employees that we have. We have a lot of dedicated, we have a lot of committed, we have a lot of faculty and staff out there that pour their heart out each day for these kids. And, you know, having conversations around the county and talking with these folks, you can see the pride, and that's something we should all be proud of. So, you know, a vision that I see for our community is communication, that line of communication from the teachers, the parents, the administrators, free-flowing back and forth, us working together to take this school system to the next level. You know, I think we as a community, as a school board, as involved parents, you know, we need to make sure that our kids are given the best opportunity to step out so that when they finish 12th grade, they're ready to compete with anybody, anywhere in the country. And so, my vision is that we collectively together make sure we have the resources in place for these teachers, for these educators, for these staff, so that when our kids have that opportunity to walk across the field in 12th grade, that they can step out, they can compete with anybody in the world.
Mr. Crooms, what is your vision?
Well, I'll tell you, the vision that I have for the school system, and it's not something that's, that I'm going to invent. Our administration and our teachers, bus drivers, all the people that are working in our schools every day, right down into the lunchroom, they already are setting the standards. They're already there serving, they're already taking care of children, loving children, leading. And it's been amazing to watch the people that are serving in our schools, from administration to teachers, and to see them to carry that torch to keep our children focused on education. I think what we need to do is have an ability for parents to become more involved with our school system, to be, see our board in a positive light. It's been a wonderful time speaking with so many people in our county. And through the speaking with our people in our county, their vision of our school system sometimes differs. But to bring those people together, let them be proud of the things that's happening in our school system, and get them involved, let them know that it's a great part of their responsibility to help educate their children and to get their children to school and to get them in a place where they need to be so they can be successful. We need to make sure all of our children are educated to the best of our abilities, and that's going to be working together as a team and not separate and not personal agendas. That is going and doing just a good job for the best benefit of our children.
Thank you. Mr. Crooms, sticking with you, safety is a hot topic these days. Where do you stand on safety issues like officers in schools, metal detectors, and arming teachers with firearms?
Well, I'll tell you something, that there is nothing more important than the safety of our children. We have to keep our students safe. And I know many of our schools have an armed guard, an armed deputy. Some of our schools do not. I believe that we need professional armed guards in our schools. I think that costs about $35,000 per armed deputy. But I'll tell you, it is vital. I would hate to see a situation in our schools where teachers now have the responsibility of carrying weapons to defend themselves when they should be focused on education. I'd hate to place them in that position. I'd really much prefer us to say, our students are so important to us, that we're going to hire professional guards, and we're not going to put that burden on administration and put that burden on teachers to try to shoot back at someone that may be trying to shoot at students. And I'll tell you, if that's the only way, if there's no money available, if the only way is to arm teachers, then do it. If that's the only way to arm the administration, do it. But I believe that we should have armed guards that are professionals, that are protecting our students. I also think that metal detectors, while expensive, should be used. I'm going to tell you, if it's important and gets paid for, there's nothing more important than the safety of our children. A question to think about is, when can they use those firearms? We've all seen scary stories on YouTube and Facebook of students attacking teachers all across this country at different times. Can a teacher pull out that weapon and defend herself? I don't want to make that happen. I would like to see armed guards at our schools protecting our students.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Mr. Malone?
You know, if there's one thing we can all agree on, it is that our kids need to be safe. They need to come to school, they need to feel safe while they're at school, and they return home safely. You know, having read the policy, yeah, there's a lot of discussion out there, and I can see some concerns for one way and the other. I guess what I'd like to start off with is, I do think one of the first things we could do is put in the school resource officers at each school in our system. I think that's very important. Second part of this is, you know, there are other things we could possibly do, some things such as, you know, working with our local sheriff's department, looking at ways for some of the shade-out, the blinds that work, and some of the actual, in your buildings, the doors, having them on the exterior windows and things such as that. But when you get back to the specifics of arming our teachers, you know, my understanding is, there's a lot of concern about actually putting a gun on a teacher's hip to be carried all day long. That does concern me. However, do we have teachers out there? Do we have administrators? Do we have faculty and staff that are willing to put their lives on the line for our kids? I absolutely believe that. I've had conversations with some of them. I commend them for that. So with that being said, while I'm against teachers carrying on their hip, on their persons every day in the classroom, the idea of having these lock boxes with biometric reader on it, where it's fingerprint activated only, possibly putting them in strategic areas within the school, having these administrators, faculty, staff that are trained with local law enforcement, I'm not the professional on that, the local law enforcements are, having them trained so that if something were to ever happen, there's a small group at each individual school, again, not on their person all day long while they're teaching, in a lock box. Because, let's, I'll face it, we've seen the horror, we've seen it on TV, it's awful. Everyone in this room would never want to see that happen here. But minutes count in a situation like this. And a resource officer, one at each school, you know, it may take them a minute or two to get to another, to the other end of the hall, to where if we have this crisis response team at some of our schools, or all of the schools, then by the time you call 911, it may take five to 10 minutes. But if those teachers, administrators, faculty or staff that are trained, have the background checks, have the psych evaluations, if they're there, you know, and they could take out that person two minutes in, one minute in, I don't know, but if they could defuse that threat, you know, to me, it's worth having them in that building because we don't know what the casualties would be, you know, if they did not take them out.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Kind of sticking on that same subject, do you think, do you feel schools should conduct routine mental health screenings for all students?
Mental health screens on all students? Well, you know, I'm not a professional on that. I'm not a psychiatrist, I don't have the medical background. So to answer that question, I'd say I'd have to have a lot more information. That's not a question that I can answer right now without gathering a lot more information and talking with professionals to see. Yeah, I'm going to have to leave that like that.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Crooms?
Absolutely not. I don't believe we should be doing that for our children. What would be the purpose behind that? And by whose standards does a student excel and do well at that, or fail that evaluation? I don't think that should be for our students. And I think that's something that parents decide for their children, not the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Sticking with you, Mr. Crooms, do you believe topics of homosexuality and alternative lifestyles should be excluded or included from the classroom?
Well, I think you have to include those things in the classroom. I think it would be not wise to inform children in our school system about the negative impact that some things in life can do to them. I think it's important to reveal to children the truth in our school system, as painful as that truth may be to some people. I think we have to let our children be informed and given the knowledge that they have to make the best choices for their life. I'm not here to make choices for people's lives for them. Parents do that with their children, but I think you have to talk about these things. It's about educating, and we can't pick and choose and mark off some things and say we can talk about this and can't talk about that. I think we need to be able to talk about how people feel. I think we need to be able to talk about people's choices and lifestyles, whether anybody agrees with it or does not agree with it. I think those things are important, and it's important for the health of our children. It's important for them to be encouraged and for them to feel like that they can come to school officials, they can go to school without feeling like they are ostracized or in any way. And that doesn't mean, that's a position of taking a positive or negative position for our school. What I'm saying is, sure, we have to talk about those things, why not?
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Mr. Malone?
Yes, I agree. You know, kids have to feel wanted, kids have to feel loved, they have to feel appreciated. And if you're not having those conversations in the classroom, if these kids, you know, if they're pushed to the side, if they're by any way treated differently or they're looked down upon, then what are you doing to their morale? What are you doing to their psyche? You know, you want to love them, you want to talk with them. You know, I think we have to, as a society, we have to have those conversations, we have to educate our kids, we have to tell them, you know, I mean, you have to be open to the different views that people have. And so, yes, we need to educate our kids and have it a topic of conversation.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Edge, candidate for Lawrence County Commissioner, District 5. I'm a lifelong resident of District 5. I was born and raised in East Dublin. And what I'd like to talk to you today is about putting $50 a year back in your pocket, the taxpayers of Lawrence County. That fee is no more than a tax. It was a tax in the beginning, it's a tax in the middle, and it's still a tax. And I'm going to work very hard to eliminate that $50 for the entire county, to put that money back into taxpayers' pocket. I'm going to work with you to make this a better county in District 5.
Cut lawn, mowing down to size with the help of the friendly folks at Hometown Supply. Get the help you need on choosing the right mower and setting up the right payments to fit your budget. Get 12- to 24-month payment options with our in-store financing, and make life a little easier. Visit the friendly folks today at Hometown Supply in downtown Dublin, right across from the skyscraper. Hometown Supply, making life a little easier.
What experience, kind of moving on to the business side of things, what experience do you have with complicated or complex budgets?
Yes, I've worked with Rayonier Advanced Materials for 17 years now. Without going into many details of the budget, you know, some of the budgets I'm in charge of exceed the budgets that sit for by the Lawrence County Board of Education. So, yeah, there's a lot of difficult topics that we face within our industry and within our company. And I've got a good group, a good team that works together. I, by no means, am a dictator. We work together, we talk through these issues. You know, we spend a lot of time, we vet a lot of ideas, we look at the numbers. You know, numbers usually won't lie. You can get through the fluff, and you can get down to the heart of really what's going on. The other part of that is, you know, I've also had a lot of experience personally with our cattle operation, as well as growing trees. And, you know, our family, we have a lot of conversation together. We've worked through problems that we may or may not have. We've worked through our, you know, our numbers, and we make the best decisions possible.
Thank you. Mr. Crooms?
Well, my first job was working with Mr. Po Boy Rollins in his country store for $2 an hour. And then I had the privilege of working for Mr. Clem Burns at the old Dublin Food Land for $3.13 an hour bagging groceries. And I used that time around businessmen to learn. And I've tried to surround myself with people who are wiser and smarter than me, so I could learn from them. And I've had the great opportunity to be an area director for Sunny's Barbecue for about 15 years, and as a general manager as well, and a traveling pit master. And I ran the operations for the Dublin store, the Dublin market, Albany market, the Thomasville market, controlling budgets that were millions of dollars, and not just taking care of people's money, but doing the day-to-day operations, training, being there inside the stores, working with individuals, taking care of everything that would day-to-day run a restaurant, run a business for the owner of that business. And so, I've got a lot of experience when it comes to making budgets, sticking to those budgets, working and trimming, and finding ways to increase the budget. So that's been a great blessing for me, it's been a great opportunity doing that. I'm now a business owner. I own a convenience store in Cadwell, and also, and so, I understand how to do operations and understand how to inspire people, to take people that are working in a particular area and to inspire them to be even greater than they already are. Maybe they're doing a great job, but to have better performance from a certain area. So I've got a lot of experience in that through the years, and it's been a pleasure serving this community from that Sunny standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Sticking with you, something that I'm sure, I'm sure both of you are aware of, that's been floating around, and people are always talking about, it always seems to kind of come up, especially this time. So I'm going to ask you, what is your position on consolidation of the Lawrence County and Dublin City schools?
Well, look, I've got a lot of friends at the Dublin City School System, and I've served many of the schools there in that area, had a lot of opportunities to do things for their baseball team and their football team, basketball team, to go inside those schools and work with theirs in different forms of service, just like I have done for years at West Lawrence and Northwest and Southwest and all of our county schools, and partnering with East Lawrence. This is something that I've had the great privilege of doing, is working alongside of teachers and administrations in all of our schools. And I'll tell you, all of these people just love and care for our children, and that's really not something that I can put a rubber stamp on, or anybody can. I know that Dublin City is losing a lot of students, and just in the last 10 years, I think they've lost, Dublin High has lost approximately half of its students over the last 10 years. I think they're down to around 600 students. And that's something that the state decides, that's not something that I have anything to do with. But I'll tell you, if they, what I mean by that is, I don't decide whether or not they keep their accreditation for what they are now, the state decides that. And if that is pulled from them, they become a county school. That's not my decision, that's the state's.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, so, you know, Dublin is very proud of their schools, West Lawrence, East Lawrence, Trinity, very proud of their schools as well. And, you know, like was just previously said, it's not up to us whether or not, you know, we consolidate. If Dublin City at that point decides to relinquish their charter, then Lawrence County will, you know, absorb those students. And at that point, the Department of Education will come in, the state board will come in. You know, we'll have a lot of collaboration with them over, you know, it may take a year, may take 18 months. But again, that's not our call to make, that will be Dublin's.
Kind of piggybacking on that, do you think it would be important to go ahead and start making arrangements for that, looking into that? Or you think that would be something you would figure out at that point in time? Or you think that's something important that the school board, that the county school board should be kind of making plans for?
Yeah, absolutely, they should be making plans right now, and I'm sure they are. I'm sure there's a lot of conversation going on between the Lawrence County Board of Education, the Dublin Board of Education. You know, definitely there needs to be some plans in place, because again, it won't happen overnight, is my understanding. If they come in, it's not going to be, well, tomorrow, every kid at Dublin has to come into a Lawrence County school. So you're talking about a period of probably a year to 18 months or so. And so, yeah, the plan should be being prepared right now and how they execute once that finally happens. You know, again, it depends on, is it a, if it were to happen, is it, does Dublin relinquish it easy, or do they, you know, is it a hostile take, not takeover from Lawrence County, but from the state coming in? So, you know, things like that would all come into play. But, yeah, we need a plan, they should be constantly in communication.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Crooms?
Absolutely, I think you have to be prepared. I think preparation for this has to be put in place, and I'm sure our school board is already making those plans and working on that. But I think that you have to not only have this plan, but you not only plan for this, but you look ahead for any, all kinds of things that may come down the line too. You're always looking at how you can survive different things, how you can grow, how you can prosper the school system. So I think not only planning for this, but you also have to always be looking at all kinds of situations, planning, preparing for good and for things that may not be good for the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Crooms, staying with you, how should teacher performance be measured?
Well, I think the state measures teacher's performance, as well as the administration in the school systems. And I trust the state testing on that, and I trust even more is our principals and our vice principals and the people that are right there in the school, working every day alongside those teachers. I would trust if a principal called and said, you know, this teacher's excelling and is doing an amazing job. I'd also trust that same principal to be able to say, hey, I'd like to have an opportunity to get this teacher to grow in some areas. We've got to trust our administration right there in the school. Now, I know there's state performance and local performance. I trust that local performance the most, that person on the ground that's right there working alongside the great teachers of Lawrence County. And I put my faith in that.
Thank you, Mr. Crooms. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, I agree. So the state obviously has their policies in place to evaluate the teachers. From what I understand, you know, administration comes in four times a year, they're rated, you know, once a year on that. And we should put a lot, we should put stock in how the state policy is, because that across the board, across the whole school system, should be a level playing field to evaluate teachers. However, I know with that being said, administration plays a vital role in that. You know, the administrator at each individual school, you know, they're responsible for that school. They know their teachers, they know their staff, you know, they're having the conversations day in and day out with them. So, you know, I think, you know, I think you put just as much, if not more emphasis on what that local administration does as well.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
The temperature is rising. Why not make a big splash with your family and friends this summer with a pool from Georgia Pools? A relax and luxurious feeling of a hot tub or sauna? Georgia Pools has a large selection of pool chemicals and accessories from name brands like Polaris, Aquabot, Pro Team Chemicals, and more. Already have a pool and need a new liner? Give Georgia Pools a call today at 478-275-3607, or stop in and visit their showroom at 1201 Hillcrest Parkway, Dublin, Georgia. Georgia Pools, Middle Georgia's largest above-ground pool. Georgia Pools, Middle Georgia's largest above-ground pool dealer. Financing is available.
The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So, for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today.
I always think it's important, you know, like we've talked about a little bit, to kind of bounce ideas off of other people and, you know, seek advice from people that, like you mentioned earlier, that maybe you don't have a, you don't have the field of knowledge about, but you can kind of seek advice. So, on that, from who would you seek advice and input and weigh in key decisions?
Sure. Well, you know, there's a lot of community members that I would go have a lot of conversations with and have some coffee and really vet a lot of these ideas. You know, there's folks within the community in the banking world, we'd have a lot of conversation about. You know, we've got a lot of retired teachers that are out there that, you know, they live the life. They're there, they were there day in, day out. You know, there's a lot of local knowledge here, you know, we can have conversations with our doctors, you know, we need to have conversations with our lawyers, with our accountants, you know. It's a community. And, you know, I don't think here's the place to name names because I would definitely leave somebody out if I did. But the purpose, the sole purpose is all of us together, gathering as much information as possible from people in the community that really have a stake in our school system. They have the kids there, they have the grandkids, they have their nieces, nephews, you know. Communication is the most important thing and in my opinion, whether it's at your home, whether it's in your school, whether it's in your church, whether it's on a ball field, you know, having that communication that's open both ways, both you being able to tell those individuals your point of view, but also being able to listen and to hear what they have to say and together, coming together to make sure we're doing what's best for these kids.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Crums?
I think first and foremost, all, most, the best counsel that comes to me comes from God. I would seek God on all counsel of all things. I'll tell you, but there's so many great people in this county who we've been knocking on doors, talking to people, who've already given me counsel, who are saying, "Here's my concerns, here's what I would think." The counsel needs to come from the people because I'll tell you, we are elected. If Kevin or I either one are fortunate enough to be on the Lawrence County School Board, we are an elected people. Therefore, we go to the people and we listen to them. We are not appointed. So, I think counsel comes from those that we serve and that's what I would do and I would look forward to doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Crums, continuing with you, what do you believe the district has done well over the past five years? And what do you think the district has done poorly that you would want to change?
Well, I'll tell you what, I think our school system has done a lot of great things over the last five years. And I'm not gonna sit here and second guess any school board members, any administration officials that had information in front of them and they made the best decision they could based on the information, information maybe that I didn't have. So, I'm not gonna second guess that. I'll tell you that I am really proud of our school. I'm really proud of our principals, vice principals, I'm proud of our bus drivers, I'm proud of people that go to work every day for the sole purpose of educating and serving our children. And so, I've seen test scores rising, I've seen more students excelling. That is a wonderful, wonderful thing. I've seen additions on the schools. I mean, those make students have pride, it gives a better school spirit, it gives a better work environment for our people who are working in the school systems. So, I want to say that's been great. I would like to see us hold on to people that are great people. We've lost some really great people. I think that's one way we can grow. I know we've lost two men that went on to be superintendents in other counties. Wow, I'd love to see them here serving in our school system because, you know, you surround yourself with great people. You surround yourself with people better than you as often as you can so that you can grow and it's good to have those people. So, I'd like to see us retain great people and I think that's one area we can grow in.
Thank you, Mr. Crums. Mr. Malone?
Sure. You know, again, having a lot of conversation with the public and with our community members, there's, again, there is a lot of pride in Lawrence County school systems. There's a lot of conversation out there where people are proud to send their kids to our schools. You know, we see kids from other counties coming over and, you know, people just, when you're having the conversations with them, you see it in their eyes, you see it in their faces, they love Lawrence County schools. So, we've got a lot to be proud of. We've got, you know, wonderful teachers out there, we've got wonderful administration staff from, like you said, from, you know, the folks that are driving the buses, the folks that are in the lunchroom that are there serving our kids every day. You know, I went into a school the other day and to see a local lady that was in the lunchroom, she's over there having a moment with a couple of kids, patting them on the back, telling these kids she loves them, telling them she's proud of them, that's not their mama, that's not their aunt, that's a school employee of Lawrence County that's taking kids under their wings and helping them out. And, you know, that should make us all proud. We've seen test scores on the rise, we have seen some new facilities, we've seen a lot of resources put back into our schools, you know. Again, something we should all be proud of. And I guess if you were asking one thing that maybe we could improve on, you know, we have had some individuals exit our counties. We've lost probably some good people to that. But at the same time, we have brought in really good people to help out in the school system. And I just, I think, you know, again, not being privy to the information of why or why not somebody is left, you know, we put the trust in our administration and our board and we feel like they've done the best job possible.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. On one side of the coin, you know, you can learn from your elders and the people who have been there and gone through it and kind of gone through the good times and the hard times. But on the other side, you can say familiarity breeds content. So, with that in mind, do you think there should be term limits for Lawrence County Board of Educated members?
Me?
Mr. Malone, yes, sir.
Absolutely, there should be term limits. There should be term limits on any board that you sit on. I'm a firm believer in that. I've had the opportunity to sit on a few boards in my life. There's nothing wrong with being ex officio and being able to sit out in the audience and have that input. But no, you, and I'm not gonna tell you what that term limit is because I'm not quite so sure on that. But, yeah, you don't need to be up there 20, 24 years, 28 years. You know, you lose your lust or you get set in your ways. You can still have just as many conversations in the public, in the community and get your message back across. But no, I'm a big believer in term limits on boards.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Crums?
Yes, I believe we should have term limits, not just on boards, but in every form of public service. I believe they should be term limits. I think it makes it where the people that are serving on their toes a little bit more, not so easy to sit back and relax and say, "Well, I've got the next 25 years to accomplish something," where they got a short period of time to get some things done. So, yes, term limits, good thing.
Mr. Crums, what do you feel is the proper student ratio in Lawrence County classrooms?
I'd like to see the ratio be as low as possible. Now, I know that we have to have teachers, more teachers to get that number to that, but I think I'd love to see that somewhere around between 20 and 24. I think we're pretty close to that now, but that's the number I'd like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Well, again, you know, not being with an education background, but having these conversations, what you see and what you hear from teachers leads me to think that they feel a lot more comfortable with a number that's somewhere around 18. It seems to be a number that gets brought up a lot, 18 to 2022 has been a number where they can actually have a lot more one-on-one communication with those students. I think we're now around 25, 26 number. So, you know, we're making progress in that area.
Thank you, gentlemen. That will finish us up for our question part. When we come back, we're gonna take a quick commercial break and we will let them have two minutes each to close out for their closing statements. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Doug Bridges. I counted it great honor to be asking you, the voters of District 1, to elect me to represent you on the Board of Education. Someone asked me the other day, "What do you think about the roundabout at East Lawrence? Between the East Lawrence High School and the middle school and the elementary?" I said, "The first thing that comes to my mind is bulldozer." I'm not sure who come up with this piece of work, maybe it's a good idea, but it's very poorly implemented. From what I witnessed, it is somewhat of a nightmare getting in and out of those schools. This is the problem on the east side with all the campuses located in one place. Traffic is horrible at times, our people deserve better. District 1, vote Doug Bridges, make the 22nd. Let's move traffic. I'm in this race for you, to stand up and be your voice. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. And once again, thank you, gentlemen, for your input concerning our Lawrence County school system. Both of you at this time will be given two minutes for a closing statement. Mr. Malone, we will start with you.
Sure. I have really enjoyed the opportunity I've had the last couple of months to really get out and be involved in the community. I've enjoyed being able to talk with so many of you out there, hear your concerns, hear your positive praises, hear your solutions. And I guess I would like to say, in asking for your vote, that I'm here for you. I have kids in the school system, I have family members that are there day in, day out. I have so many friends, so many kids that I've helped coach, helped at a Wana that are, you know, coming through the school system. And it's great to see, to see their sparkle in their eyes when they talk about school and the pride that they have. And, you know, I want to, I want to be there for you, I want to listen to you. You know, again, communication works both ways. I think I can sit there, I'll listen to your concerns. But I ask you, if you come, you know, don't just be an armchair quarterback. Come see me, come have questions, come have concerns. But when you do, bring me those concerns, tell me what your solution is or what we could do together or as a community to help this board, to help this school system, to help in general our community so that we are a better place to live, to play, to raise a family and to be the best Lawrence County we can be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Crums, you now have two minutes.
When I was in the school, my bus driver's name was Levada Wilcox. And I want to tell you, she's the first person I seen every day that represented the school system and she was the last person I seen every day that represented the school system. And she was amazing. She was a great woman and she cared about every child on that bus. There was also somebody else that their name sticks out in my mind is Miss Ann Franks. She kept the Bible on her desk and every person that's in this room today, I can promise you, was influenced by her life. Miss Ann Franks, as a teacher, she had a great influence on me. And it helped me to want to serve these two ladies. These two ladies gave me inspiration as a young man that I've wanted to serve. And that's what I've done in the school system for not only the east side, but the west side. Been there in the schools, I've been serving our children, I've been serving the administration for almost 15, 16 years inside the schools, working. You've seen me cheering on our students during their sporting events, during their drama time, during time that they were doing band. You've seen me on the sidelines, pulling for our football team. I love the people of Lawrence County, I love our children. I want to serve you. This is an extension of the service I've already been doing for the last 15 years, working alongside our administration and our teachers. And I, all the people I've had the opportunity to meet over the last year of getting out, talking and visiting with people, what a wonderful opportunity to hear from people, hear their concerns and hear what's important to them, friends and neighbors, people that I've known all my life and to hear and listen to their counsel and to hear their concerns. I can guarantee you that I'll be honest, I would hold an office that's with integrity and I would do all I could to represent you in a positive way and to listen to you, to hear you and to voice your concerns and I would serve our students faithfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crums. That will conclude our debate for tonight for the Lawrence County Board of Education, District 4 seat. We want to thank Mr. Bill Crums, Mr. Kevin Malone for being here. We really do appreciate y'all so much.